Good evening and welcome to the regular session here at the Town of South Kingston on March 19th. I would like to ask everybody to please stand and join in the pledge.
Here.
Counsel Vice President Collins.
Here.
Councilman De Cruz.
Here.
Councilwoman Gledhill.
Here.
Councilman Bailey.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. We move on to item number 4A, which is a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2018 and 2019 Town Council preliminary budget. Opening from there, is there any discussion or -- motion will eventually be made, but is there a discussion and questions, and if so, we'll move on from there.
We'd be happy to provide you with an update on revenues and some observations about where we are in the process, if that's helpful.
Yes.
Very good. So I'm going to have Trish walk through about half a dozen slides which show the revenue changes that have occurred since March 1st and then again after March, what would it have been?
It's through today.
Through today. And then again, some observations about where we are in the process and high points and sort of points in the process that seem important to focus on.
So where are we today? We had a few, we had a slight decrease of $104,000, 452, that in the general fund, that's related to some new health insurance and dental insurance increase rates. We had originally budgeted 8% for health insurance. Our rates are coming in at 3% increase, so we were able to reduce the general fund budget by $95,000. Delta Insurance, we had originally budgeted 5%. There's actually a decrease in our dental insurance of 3%, so we were able to reduce the dental insurance by $8,995. So our total general fund budget decreased from a proposed $24,602,977 down to $24,498,525. We have some new numbers in, updated as of today on valuations. We have a net value of $4 billion, $357,900,923. It's a decrease of $1,554,283 from our originally proposed budget. Tangible personal properties, March 15th is the deadline for filing, so review is ongoing and will be updated prior to June 15th. Currently, our tangible personal property is $111,270,47, which is a decrease of $1,483,91. We don't expect it to be that much of a decrease.
I ask you one quick question.
Yes.
The value, when we budgeted for it, or was that based off of vision appraisal or something different?
Yeah, that's where we were in the process at that time when we proposed the budget. Jean?
Your question's on real estate value?
Correct.
Yeah, that's, every year, that fluctuates.
No, I understand that. But I guess what I was getting at is it fluctuates because of new property, properties being sold. When they get sold, do you get reevaluated at that point, or no?
No. They're only reevaluated based on the revaluation year. If a new property is added after the revaluation year, it's based on the database and the schematics and the values that are in the system at that time. So, but they fluctuate for a wide variety of reasons. We have dwellings being demoed.
Right.
We have additions, decks.
Yeah, I was just looking for an explanation as to why there was a decrease, because that's pretty state, you know, in terms of the value, it generally doesn't change much, but...
We still have a little bit more field work to do that'll hopefully add a little bit more value on real estate. I think it's more hopeful that we'll add additional value on tangibles, because those accounts really haven't even been reviewed yet.
Okay.
The point is well taken. It's essentially a guess at what we're going to see in terms of new construction. I mean, that's the biggest piece that is built into the guess at what the value's going to be. How many new additions, how many new structures are going to be built?
And how many we get rid of, potentially.
That's right.
And in December, we were estimating our values to be up over 1%, but they're not. They're at 0.8%, so that's where we are right now. But we're still doing work on that, as the assessor had indicated.
Yeah, that's, next couple of months are a pretty intense review of both real estate and tangibles.
Okay. Thank you.
In the motor vehicles, we actually, our first download from the DMV, we found in our original proposal that our proposed budget, 1,200 vehicles actually came to us from the DMV that were unpriced. So this is a major difference in what we're seeing today as opposed to when we proposed the budget. So today, our motor vehicle values are at $174,791, which is actually an increase of $24 million, which is more in line with what we were estimating back in December. So we have better values today than we did when we proposed. Updated tax need as of today, the motor vehicle portion, which is the fixed portion, because the tax rate is frozen at $18.71, it's generating $3,270,000. Taxes to be raised from real and personal property, the tax need is $69,963,443. That equates to a 34 cent increase in the tax rate to $15.65 from our current tax rate of $15.31. And that's, I just gave you a formula on how we calculate that. Tax need divided by net value. What is the impact on the average homeowner? Today, the current average homeowner is assessed at $350,000. We are estimating the average increase for 2019 on the homeowner is about $120. 65 to 1531 equates to about $120 on the average assessed value.
So, this slide is harder to read than it should be, I suppose, but this is just sort of the history of where we've been over the last few months. You'll remember that back in January, the council gave guidance that we try to look for a property tax transfer from the school department in particular of 2%. The superintendent has come in, her recommendation was 2.37. The manager's proposed budget was a 2.5% property tax transfer to the school fund. And the three numbers you see under that are the tax rates that were associated with that. The 15.55 is actually as the budget was proposed. The 1578 is the property taxes. It was calculated using the erroneous motor vehicle data that we were using. We were using the assumed data of 1,200 vehicles not being priced. We didn't see the values there, and we didn't recognize the deficiency in those files until after we had spoken to the council about that. We're now at 1565, which represents a 2.2% increase over last year at the property tax rate. The 2.93 is what the committee, the school committee, has requested, and the numbers associated with that are the percent increase as it would have been using the motor vehicle data we had when we last we spoke, and the current motor vehicle data, which is 15.69 or 2.5% increase if we were to go with that number. The numbers at the bottom are the property tax impact on a household with a home value That's the difference. The difference between the 2.5% proposed by the manager's office and the 2.93 is $227,000 and some change. And this slide is really just to sort of bring us to a discussion about, or to at least remind ourselves of how we get to that higher number. The superintendent had dealt with a whole bunch of changes as well on their side. They had numbers coming in from RIDE, they had numbers coming in from the health carrier, from the trust, and things have shifted over the course of the last two or three months. The upshot of all this is that when the superintendent's office, when the school department looked at the changes that were coming in, they opted to deal with those reductions as reductions. They came in with a 2.37% proposed budget that went to the school committee. Those changes are ephemeral. They're not deep structural changes. They're not changes in things that we can expect to have forever. We have a one-time windfall on the healthcare, we have a one-time windfall on the dental. We're not necessarily going to see those changes year after year after year. So the superintendent's budget built in sort of, we're going to take that and put it aside or put it into a reduction, or actually, she was looking at an increase, a slight increase for this operating year, from 2%, which is what the council had given guidance on, to 2.37, which was a slight reduction from where she expected to be, given our conversations. But she didn't build that all back into program. The department didn't say, what we've got here are permanent changes in the structure of our program that justify permanent changes in the way we're programming. She saw a change in terms of healthcare, she saw a change in terms of dental costs. She saw an opportunity or a need, I guess, to reach into the fund balance. She didn't say that that was going to be a permanent aspect of their budgets. The school committee has treated them as permanent structural changes. They've opted to put new program into the school budget, and those new programs are funded with things like a one-time reduction in the fund balance, a one-time reduction in the healthcare costs, a one-time reduction in the dental costs. I think it's important for us to remember the context, and the context is these are windfalls. These are not, these are not permanent structural changes in the school budget.
So theoretically, we would end up at a bigger number next year automatically if those items stayed constant?
We certainly have more uncertainty next year because we don't know what's going to happen with regard to healthcare. We don't know what's going to happen with regard to the dental care. We do know that you cannot keep using fund balance for operational purposes. So there's more uncertainty and there is a built-in deficiency to some extent.
So a slide, a few slides ago, said it was, I think, like $223,000, $227,000 increase over what we were looking at between the, that's between the 2.5 and the 2.93, correct?
That's correct. So it's actually about half a million dollars, not quite, $400,000 difference, just about half a million dollars difference, between the guidance, the 2.0 and the 2.9.
Right. So, but in our budget document here, it's all built around the 2.5.
That's correct.
Would it be, and I recognize, and I really like the way that you explain that with the fixed costs, and I can see where, it seems a little frivolous to be spending money on something that's not a fixed cost. Like you said, if we know these are windfalls, it's not going to come back next year necessarily. We don't, we don't know. But would it be unwise of us to use our own undesignated fund to cover that 2.27, to keep it at the 2.5 what you built your budget around?
We begin to get into a problem with, you know, the credit ratings and our credit standing if we aren't putting our undesignated funds aside. If we're not building and maintaining a rainy day fund...
But isn't it, our rainy day fund, like, really well-funded?
It's reasonably well-funded, although we haven't met or exceeded the standard which we've set.
It's not at your policy. So the policy is up to 17%, and right now, you're at 13.5. So there's a best practice when you're looking at your fund balance, your unassigned fund balance, so it's a percentage of your net operating budget. That's where you're at. You're at 13.53. And I will remind you that the general fund is using $550,000 of unassigned fund balance, and the school department does have $2.7 million in their unassigned fund balance, which is separate.
And we did that in order to get to the 1.3, I'm sorry, $1.3 million increase over last year's property tax transfer. This is a significant increase in commitment in terms of transfer to the school fund because we know the school fund is suffering from reductions in state revenue. We lose about $900,000 worth of state revenue in various forms this year, and it's $1.3 million more in property tax transfer, which makes up that difference and then a little more.
Did they use any money from their undesignated fund balance?
500,000.
They are, okay.
I understand what you're saying, Rob. I think there's a structural deficit and you're taking reserves to fill it. The structural deficit is worse next year, if everything remains equal.
If everything remains equal. And we don't, we don't have good reason to believe that it will.
Right. So I think that's risky to be using reserves. It doesn't fix the structural deficit problem. Were those all the slides?
I'm sorry?
Is that all the slides?
That's all the slides.
Okay.
I mean, I recognize that funding those additions that the school committee proposed, it's a long-term commitment. A lot of those positions that they proposed, like for the bus driver and the social-emotional learning thing, I think those are things that should have existed a long time ago, frankly. And so although it is a long-term commitment, I think we would see it somewhere eventually, and I think it just makes sense to fund those. They're going to come, no matter what. And I would rather do it now than, I mean, it's very timely right now for everything that's going on, especially their approach to the social-emotional trainings and curriculum. So I'm comfortable funding those extra things. I don't think any of those positions were frivolous or something that we wouldn't see again, you know, next year or the year after. I don't think their need for those positions is going to diminish.
I'm comfortable with the 2.93 request as well, and I think, especially given that we got good news on the motor vehicle front today. Because that was looking grim before, maybe I owe a little bit of an apology to the speaker. Yeah, so I mean, I think those services are justified.
Although I will point out that even though the motor vehicles look better this year than we expected this year, the long-term prognosis is not good. That 5% of our budget is slated, or that 5% of our revenues is slated to go. And we've been, you know, it's been slowly eroded for the last 20 years, and it's eroding more quickly.
I want to be the person who says I want the glass half-full, because I like to look at positive situations and being professionally diplomatic. It's a good thing. However, the harsh reality is, it's not always a good thing, because the state looks at South Kingston as an affluent town. It affects our funding formula, it affects some of the grant monies we receive, it affects CD GB funding. We have schools we have to support, we have children we have to support. I sat there and listened to the teachers, or the presentation about the teachers. 80% of their budget is healthcare benefits, retirement, pension, and salaries. I don't want to negate the teachers, but more importantly, I don't want to negate the We need to continue to have the reputation we have within our state and within our community. People move here because education is important, and everybody wants to have their children educated. Are there hard decisions that are going to have to come? Oh, there are. I hate to hear it, but it's inevitable. But we still, when 80% of the budget is made up of salary negotiations, it only leaves 20% to the children. So as much as I want to value and save money, I'm in agreement.
It was funny, I looked last year at this time, the Narragansett Times printed an article talking about our vote, the one that seemed to go on forever, and I had to get up and leave in the middle of the meeting. And in that session, I said that the reason why I wasn't supporting the increase in property tax transfer was because I didn't think that the budget that the school committee presented showed any innovation or any forward thinking for some of the deficits that they were facing. I didn't think that they were, had a realistic picture of what was going on, or sort of a plan or a direction that they were going in. And then here we are this year, where I think that they have proactively addressed some things. I know it costs money, but I think that they are looking to the future, especially with the legacy plan and the gut-wrenching decisions that they had to go through last week. So I think they're making those moves and they recognize that it's not sustainable to do what they've been doing. So I don't think, when I think about this increase, it's an investment I'm willing to make because they sort of met me halfway. They did the things that, for me, what I wanted to see out of a budget, and they're making strides in the right direction.
This won't shock anybody. I can't support a sizable increase like this. We have to consider that we do need to provide a quality education with all the bells and whistles, all the things that the kids need, but we have to consider the whole community. And I think some of the things that they're proposing, and we have two public hearings coming up with them, so I'm not going to itemize things here, I'm glad to address them then with the school committee, but I can't, I can't support an increase this large. I would hope that they could do a little fine-tuning and make that number more affordable.
Now, my concern is kind of what we talked about in terms of the fact that we're getting savings this year that were kind of unexpected. So it's going to compound how much it's going to cost in the coming years to keep those services, which I feel those, a lot of those services are very, they're needed, but I really wish we could find the money somewhere else for some of the additional services.
As of this discussion about the decision that was made on Friday and the funding formula, and a lot of people seemed to be more engaged in years past, just saying like, well, why don't we get more money, and can we go up and lobby and testify? And someone reached out to me and said, do you, you know, you think that there's potential to make a difference there? And honestly, I mean, I think that it's the way that politics is designed in Rhode Island, and there's a lot that goes into it, more so than just how many people can we get to testify and say, please, give us more money. So I completely recognize that. I don't think our, the funding formula's ever going to perk back and come back to us and be wonderful. But I do think there's potential for housing reimbursements to go up, and I think that we could see that savings in the future. And I think that if you didn't get these requests for, that increase for those positions and things that they needed this year, you would get that request next year. So for me, it just, I would rather approve it now.
Bottom line is, I think it is what it is. And there's no secret. Come on, we're all sitting at this table. We're not going to get the funding formula. I mean, it's not going to go up for us. We've been told time and time again, they consider us a wealthy town. And so with declining enrollment, Joe's point is very well-taken, and I certainly respect it. I don't even have children in the school system anymore, but I'm still a taxpayer, and I believe in the educational system in this town. But where's the money going to come from? If it doesn't come from a proactive approach to doing something that this town can certainly be proud of with the level of education that we have, I don't know where it's going to come from, honestly. We are taking a proactive approach, and we're enclosing the middle school, and we're enclosing Wakefield School. I'm not going to say whether I agree or disagree with that, I have some issues with that, but that's my own personal opinion, not the opinion of the council. We need to make a decision right now for the upcoming year. And Joe, I certainly respect your opinion, but we're not getting any money from the state anymore. These kids need us to support them. I don't want to have an open pocketbook, I truthfully don't, but I want to give the children and the families that live in this community the best opportunity possible. I truthfully do.
You know, the state considers us to be a wealthy town, but I don't think we're really, truly a wealthy town. There's plenty of folks in town with money, but there's a lot of people that don't...
Have money.
Have money.
Great.
And Rob, do you recall, what's the number, isn't there a number where you have to make a certain amount of money in order to be able to live here? I forget that, it's in the, is it in the 70s?
The median, 72,000.
Right, okay.
Little household.
And I think it's more that we have the room to take it from our tax basis, what the state comes back and says, is that you can tax more in order to support your schools.
I don't want to give away the store, but I want to be somewhat smart about what we do. And the point was well-made, that we just can't keep taking $500,000 from a reserve fund. We just can't do that. We can't do that. But what are we tasked to do when we're not getting state-funded to the degree that we need to operate our schools? And we are taking the right step, and we did it at the right time. The legacy study and the facility study showed that there are options that have to be out there for us to consider. Are they the best options? Maybe not. But we still have kids that have to be educated, and we have to give them. I look at it this way, you know, I talk with my heart, I want to talk with my head. But truthfully, the kids in this community, the people in this community, want their children to be educated. They come to SK because the school system has a wonderful reputation. It's not a responsibility to just give away the store. It's a quality of life issue, not only with education, but with the children of this community's future. And if we can continue to implement programs, I know it's expensive, but we have a responsibility too. And, sorry, that's kind of the way I feel.
I'm going to make a motion that we amend the proposed budget by...
All right, we'll have more discussion.
$227,191 to add a difference from 2.5% to 2.93%.
Joe, did you have something to say? I think you started to talk there.
I'll second it, so we can have discussion.
We can have a discussion now.
Yes, of course.
This is my fourth budget. Remember that whatever we approve this year is the starting point next year. So we never go backwards. I don't think that anybody could argue that with less than 3,000 students, a $60 million tax transfer is not adequately funding. I think when you, when you parse it out by the per pupil costs, I think we fund very well without a significant increase. It's my two cents.
Yeah, no, and I hear that. Rob, were you saying when you overlooked, when you looked at the budget for the school department and you presented it with information about their revenue shortfalls, I think you said that their increase in spending for like new programs and new things was, was it around 1% or something?
So, well, yes. Their expenditure increases for this year, proposed, which would get to a property tax transfer of 2.93, is a 1%, increase in expenditures.
Okay.
That's correct. And that's because they've had decreases in expenditures, they've cut some things out, but the overall increase in expenditures is 1%.
So I think anybody that can rebuild their budget from a $60 million budget, or what was it, last year, to, I mean, from what they did last year with just a 1% increase in that department, I think that that sounds, there's like, there's a lot of fiscal responsibility in spending there.
It is clearly the case that what is driving the property tax transfer, whether it's 2.5% or 2.93%, is the loss of state revenue.
Right.
Absolutely.
And the majority of it, if I can add, is compensation, salary, and benefits, which... And the majority of it, if I can add, is compensation, salary and benefits, which is only, if I'm not mistaken from the last meeting, about a twenty percent increase in activities, funding, and what goes to the children. And so we're stuck with a barrier of eighty percent. Granted, when the changes go through, if they do at all, we will have some changes due to attrition, retirement, you know, people wanting to take a step back, but twenty percent's not a huge amount to give to the children in X number of schools.
Yeah, maybe it's me, I just don't understand what that means, what you said just means, but it could be me.
No, no, no.
I just don't, that's, that's fine. No, no, I have nothing to add. I don't understand the twenty percent that goes to the children. I don't, I don't know where that number came from or how that, and it really doesn't affect this discussion. I don't want to labor.
Rob, you talked about in budget building that you, I don't know if you did it this year with our staff, but having each department start over from scratch, and rather than build from their budget from the previous year. Does the school department also build that way, or is that just us?
No, I really can't speak to whether or not the school pursues a zero-based budgeting concept, if it's at the core of what they do or not. And there's always room for sort of improving on that process, even if it is a core principle, it's one that you have to remind yourself of all the time.
Right.
So I don't know whether it's a core principle of their budgeting system.
I mean, it would be interesting to, I know we collaborate with them a lot, and Trish, you pull rabbits out of your hat all the time to make this work, but I would be interested to see them start over, like their departments start over from zero and build that way as opposed to just, like Joe said, every year, starting from the point that we were at last year. It just seems like that would be a good way to start working on that, even though we can't tell them what to do.
Right, you can't.
Only suggestion for anybody who's watching.
It's a, it's a, it's a good point. I think regardless of the answer, though, a one percent increase in total expenditures for their budget represents fiscal prudence, and something that they've had to demonstrate for ten years since they've started losing so much state aid. And so I think that is one of the reasons to, you know, approve of the two-point-nine-three. I think also seeing that they're dedicated towards, you know, making their facilities more efficient is, it's going to be long-term savings for the program. And I do want to just clarify something, I mean, I think the eighty percent that's going to the teachers, you know, that, there are increases greater than the rate of inflation that are, that are just built into the contracts. And so keeping the budget under, or to like a one percent growth rate is pretty impressive, because that's below the rate of inflation itself. And about the teach, I mean, the money that goes to the teachers, I don't think that money should be said that it's not going to the students. I think that teachers are the people who provide the services to the students, so that is directly giving money to the students. So again, I'm in favor of this amendment, so I don't know.
Just a point of order, I understand based on the charter, there has to be a revenue source identified. So I would suggest...
Property tax transfer would be.
Very good.
Yeah, by about, by the two-twenty-seven figure, which is about four cents or something like that.
So we have motion on the floor? Any, well, before I do that, any further discussion? We have motion on the floor, and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
No.
No.
Any abstentions? Three to two, motion carries. Now it's going on to the full budget, if I'm not mistaken, so let's...
Typically, we also look at the outside agencies.
Dale, I'm going to need an abstention, abstention form for the budget.
Me too. Recusal, yes.
Recusal, I'm sorry.
Two.
Yes. Yeah, glad you could read my mind there.
Yep, let me, actually.
Yes, because I think I left that at home because I was reading it.
I have a copy, we can copy.
Thank you, dear. I'll tell you what I was doing.
No, I'm looking for, oh, well, that isn't...
We're just pulling up the outside agencies. No, no, but we're going to put it up on the screen.
Just write an X, Joe.
About as big as it's going to get.
No, that's okay, I can see it. I'm blind, but I can see.
So mention those. Johnny Cake Center would request eight thousand dollars increase over that. The Welcome House was requesting five thousand more. The Easter Seals was requesting three thousand more.
So I'm happy to start the discussion off on this if everybody's ready. I would be in favor of the additions from the Johnny Cake Center and the Welcome House, but if we're looking to take it from somewhere else within this list, then the place that I would start is the agencies that have the largest budget, where our contribution is the least sort of impactful. I would start by taking reductions from that area if we wanted to keep this, the same line item number, but still give those increases. I think that the Johnny Cake Center especially has really stepped up and done incredible things in the last year. I frankly wish we could give them even more money because the services that they provide the town are so broad. It's no longer just a food pantry, it's no longer just sort of organizing SNAP benefits in their consignment store, and it's become so much more, and I think they're really diversifying their services, and I think that would be...
Do you want to, do you want me to make a copy of this?
Is it in here?
No.
Yeah, in your budget? Is it in?
No.
Why me? I can't, I want, yes, and I don't have that.
I have a copy, we can copy.
Sure.
I'm sorry.
And just a point of clarification, on the outside agencies, is the five thousand for WCRPC still in there?
Still in there.
Okay. I think we should feel free to redistribute that.
That being said, I had, when I was looking at it originally, I had that in mind. Personally, I think that, I know they didn't ask for it, but the South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention, I go to their meetings, they could use additional funding. I was thinking of an additional one thousand dollars to South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention would go a long way with that organization, and it's something that is touching our community monthly and daily, actually.
This list, to me, we can go back and forth, is not a high dollar amount, however, every dollar matters. I think Liz's suggestion of making this total revenue neutral is a good one.
Surprise, surprise.
No, I agree, but Liz, I kind of cut you off, so...
No, no.
I asked you to finish, please.
Oh, I mean, that was pretty much the gist of what I was saying. You know, I am not opposed to those additional increases specifically for the Johnny Cake Center and the Welcome House, and if we couldn't make it revenue neutral by taking from somewhere else, I'd be okay with just the addition of it, which I know Joe does not want to agree with me on, but that's, that's where I'm at. And I also really liked this year, Rob, when you presented this and you had that flow chart and described sort of, you know, you don't ever want to have your funding be the sole reason an organization exists, because then you're looking at something that, you know, you want an organization to be able to sustain itself on its own. And I think that, looking at this, I could follow that flow chart and be like, oh, yes, what organizations are we supporting because we want them to do what they're doing, but we don't necessarily want to do it ourselves. And especially the Johnny Cake Center and the Welcome House, those are services that they provide to our town that we should never provide, we should always let them do. And I don't think, when you look at their budget, that we're providing so much that they wouldn't be able to sustain themselves without it, but I think that it's a healthy contribution, and I think it's a necessary contribution. And also, we all know I volunteer with the Wakefield Village Association, and I think their partnership with the Economic Development Committee on the Saget Duckett River Study, and their sort of enhancement with the Riverfire program has just really brought so many people downtown. I mean, in the summertime, the summer was the busiest they've ever been, and I have a waiting list of about forty vendors who wanted to participate in the Riverfire events because they had seen how successful it was and how wonderful it is on the Thursday nights down there. So I think that there's a value to that and what they do for our downtown. I was actually walking Christmas time during the Christmas event that they do, and I saw Larry Fish, and he stopped me and said, like, "Look at the people that are downtown," you know, and it was crazy. There were, the streets were filled, and he was like, "Every event that you guys have, people are here." And what a great thing it is for our town. So I just don't, I think that there's value in that request as well. Any more? Well, if we were to take it from somewhere, I would, like I said, start with organizations that have the largest budget where our contribution is the smallest fraction of it. So I think in the documents that they provided and that Amy had emailed us, organizations like Thunder Mist, which I love, and I'm not, this is not picking on Thunder Mist, I think that their budget was somewhere in excess of forty million dollars. I think if we had to take from somewhere, that's probably where I would start. And again, this is not, because I don't think Thunder Mist is valuable, but also looking at the charts that we have within our budget about the percentage of services offered to, percentage of residents and who depends on it, that's where I would begin. And again, this is not an attack on Thunder Mist, it's just, if we were going to make this budget neutral, that's where I would start.
So you're talking about the purpose of taking some money away from Thunder Mist?
They provide a lot of services, you know, even when I'm at the farmer's market, you know, with teaching people how to eat properly. I think they sell tokens or something like that.
Yeah, yep, they manage that whole SNAP.
Yes, so they can use their SNAP program.
And I'm not discounting how valuable they are.
No, I know, I understand that, but I'm just saying that I think that they bring a lot more, you know, I've been in there a few times, and they bring a lot more to the community than we think sometimes because we don't always see it. And I know that they have a huge budget, but at the same time, they're in our community at the, you know, with a really nice facility.
And totally fair argument. I, and I'm not, I don't need to make this budget revenue neutral, but if I did, that's...
Let's talk about it.
Sure. Go for it, Joe, please.
Well, let's, why don't we first figure out what dollar amount we're talking about? So of these increases, is everybody in favor of all of them?
Well, I guess, like, when you go down to the Wakefield Village Association, I think last year we increased their budget potentially, and I do believe that they need help with having a safe, viable vessel, so they don't sink in the river. But I think what they need to keep, I think what we all need to keep in mind is that, I think what they said is, was it was a one-time ask for the additional three thousand, but I don't want to see us next year start from eight thousand.
Yeah, I don't think that it's ever presented that way.
Yeah, so we can word it that way.
We definitely can. I also remember it was a one-time ask for banners that were not approved, so they spent the five thousand dollars on baskets when he asked the Riverfire, which everybody enjoys. I don't take that away from me at all. They attract a lot of people into the community. I'm not saying I'm for it or opposed to it. I'm just saying, Joe had a great idea, let's look through this and see where our dollars are best spent.
Wasn't Joe's. Now, the other one I just want to talk about briefly is I think Narrow River Preservation Association, they do a lot, and I think if we had to do a portion of what they did for the town technically or for the waterway, it would cost the town a significant, significant amount of money. So I don't see a problem with increasing from fourteen fifty to nineteen fifty to help them with testing.
And just to circle back for one second on the Wakefield Village Association.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Fourteen fifty more.
I'm sorry, fourteen, I read that wrong, I apologize.
Your point is well taken.
And just a point on the Wakefield Village Association, what I look for when we're supporting especially these like little sort of village groups, is how much they can fundraise to support themselves. And just in my volunteer hours with the Wakefield Village Association, I mean, they're throwing events that are in excess of twenty thousand dollars.
No, I completely agree with you, and I know it's...
Yeah, well, I'm just, I'm saying that, you know, not only are they able to cover those costs, but then they make enough money to sustain themselves. So when these purchases come through for like three thousand dollars or five thousand dollars or whatever it is, that's, to a group like that, that just sort of maintains itself, it can be a big hit all at once. So I can appreciate where buying a boat, and I've pulled that boat out of the water personally myself, so I guess I'm a little biased.
I don't disagree with you absolutely. I just don't want agencies coming back year after year saying this is a one-time, this is a one-time, and that has happened.
Yeah.
And you know that has happened. I'm not saying I will negate the three thousand dollars whatsoever. I like what the... I like what it brings to the town, I like what it brings to the businesses, and I really like what it brings to the families. So I just want to make the point. I'm not in opposition. I don't want businesses to come back year after year, because you were up the fact that they had to send in the financial statements, which they do now, to say, this is a one-year opportunity, this is a one-year expense, because that's what's happened.
Sure.
But I am an advocate for Wakefield Village Association, I have family who has businesses in Wakefield. So I just want to make that point very clear.
Yeah, I think that in Rob's budget message, when he talked about developing a better relationship sort of with our businesses and looking at how we can redistribute the meal and beverage tax to better support our local businesses, I think that next year, we're going to see a better partnership and maybe even more value to organizations like the WVA and other merchant. So I think that, I don't necess, I can't say what they're going to do, but I'm hoping that with those added benefits and that sort of enhanced relationship, they won't need to come for these one-time expenses as much. That's, I think...
Does anyone recall, I can't remember, I didn't write a note down, Easter Seals increase as to why they're asking for...
She didn't know, because she was asked to come last minute when we asked her. She wasn't sure.
So I'm just going to, when I was thinking about this earlier before this meeting, I was just thinking we'd probably distribute the five thousand. So what I was thinking at that stage was using two thousand to bring Johnny Cake up to twenty-four thousand, which we give to the other major agencies, and then two thousand for Welcome House, which would bring them up to twelve and be halfway up to that level. And then the final one thousand, I think perhaps for Wakefield Village Association to seed the money needed for that boat.
I was thinking something a little bit differently. I guess in certain cases, I'm a giver in general, like I like to help organizations that do a lot with a little. I guess in certain cases, I'm a giver, in general, like, I like to help organizations that do a lot with a little. Personally, I would see no problem approving this the way that it stands with the requested increases. I do have some questions on some of the increases. Like I said, I was just curious why we had 2,000 proposed for Easter Seals, and now it's going to be more than 100% of what they were getting initially. Did they get more in the past than we, no, I'm looking at it now.
No.
Right.
From what I remember, and this is my six years' experience doing the budgets, what had happened was, there was, I don't even want to say because I don't know if it's correct. They had some offices that we.
Okay.
And they. This is off the record because I'm not 100% sure. But they were servicing the family stores well, and I'm not even sure where they are as of this moment. They used to be on Robinsons.
Still are.
And, yes, and I've been in there many times where they were. They also, at this point, based on the service that they were giving with the correlation that was utilizing those services, were finding a need for more money. But as Liz said, we don't know where that funding comes from, and I don't think we get a fair delineation from that.
They do a lot of fundraisers, like the Kentucky Derby Party and some other stuff.
The road race.
They do their road race.
Right. The other point I just wanted to make quickly is I feel that we can do a lot with a little overall. I know that the, you know, when you're talking about 200 and something thousand dollars and you're helping, I didn't count how many organizations are here, but let's say there's 20. That's really spreading it out and giving a little to a lot of organizations that can then turn around and do a lot of things that we can't do as a town for people in our community. And I see this as a very minor drop in the bucket. I know that's still an increase, and we should definitely be cautious of that, but it's not overall very significant in terms of changing anyone's life in terms of what we're paying in our taxes.
So when I think about these, oh, I'm sorry, were you gonna say? When I think about these increases too, so this is $18,000 increase over last year. And, you know, as we know, we get elected every two years. So I don't know what the next council's gonna want to authorize, if they're gonna say, "No, we're gonna slash this," if they're gonna say, "We're gonna double it," I have no idea. So I try not to look at it as too much of like a long-term commitment or anything like that because really, this is, as Joe has indicated in the past, we talk more about this sometimes than we do in other aspects of the budget. And.
Dollar for dollar, $60 million we spent.
Right, I know, I know.
That's my point, like, meaning.
So I would rather, I mean, for me, and I think of right now, what I would want to do was to, would be, I would approve the $18,000 increase.
I could have one opportunity to speak.
Your meeting.
You already had your one.
My meeting, it's our meeting. South Kingstown Partnership for Prevention. I have also gone to those meetings and during my six-year tenure have been involved with that, even through the high school. The bottom line is, we have an opioid addiction.
Real big problem.
That is continuing.
To get worse.
Grow. And we all know, in the last month, we've had two of our young children die, and I don't know how many more. I know they do get some money and they do get some funding. I would not mind increasing that, even if it's just $1,000, because I think it's important that we reach out to our youth, we need to be in the high schools. I go to those high school meetings, you might have.
Yeah, we need, all the schools we need to be in.
It's, it's, we need, we need to support this because this is an epidemic, not only in our town, but in our country. So I, I don't care if we reallocate the funds out of the $5,000 or move something around, but I think it's important. We're talking about our youth, we're talking about our schools, we're talking about, you know, the entire educational budget. This is something that's really important and hitting home today, guys, come on. We, we need to continue to be supportive of educating our adolescents, our children, and our next generation. So I would like to, it's okay if it doesn't happen, I guess, but I think it's important that it does happen.
Somebody needs to make a motion.
Well, I guess the other question real quick, if we're gonna make a motion, this $18,000 increase includes the 5,000, or is it subtracted?
It does not include it as of yet, and I would point out, it's 34,142 combining both the human service agencies and the.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was looking at the bottom.
So it would be 29.
You said it's 32, I'm looking.
34,000.
Why am I looking at it, I think I'm looking at a different number then, because at the bottom it says combined total human service and outside agency.
Oh, I'm.
Yeah, I didn't get that.
I'm sorry, I was, I was looking.
I got 22,142, less 5,000 is 17,142, if Meg wants to add 1,000, that's 18,142, I think.
How did you get 17,000, I'm sorry?
I think that's right.
It's, it should be 23,142 minus the 5,000, which would be 18,000. I think when the 5,000 is in red, that should be a negative on the spreadsheet.
I'm looking at.
I have a, I have a color copy one, I'm sorry. Let me just take a look here, hold on a second. I don't have a calculator, but I guess I could pull one out, 1,692.
I have a bottom line.
So the 18,142.
That does not include the 5,000.
That does not include.
That is correct, the 5,000 has been netted out in the sheet year.
Okay.
It's still built into the budget, but it's netted out on the, on the sheet the year.
So the question is, do we approve the 18,000, and then are there any other organizations that we want to add to? Right, but I'm just talking out loud.
So are you looking to approve the requested column over the prior year? Is that what you're looking to do? You have a requested column for 2019, 212,157.
That's what we're discussing.
Over the adopted 194.
I'm seeing 195, am I looking at? Oh, the 194, I'm sorry, that's, that's 17,18, 194, okay.
Amy, you may have something to add, of course.
I do, there's one point that I do want to raise, is that $1,000 included within that 18,142 is a new organization that requested funding last year that was not included and requested funding again this year in the amount of $1,000.
Okay. Neighbors helping.
So if we included Meg's increase, Meg and Bryant's, no, 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 I'm just saying, I'm just clarifying, if we included the increase that both Bryant and Meg suggested for the Partnership for Prevention, that would bring us to $19,142 over the proposed budget. Is that correct, Trish?
That is correct.
I'll make a motion that we amend the proposed budget by $19,142 through property tax transfer in order to increase the bud, the line items for the agencies as shown, including a $1,000 increase to the SKA Partnership for Prevention and zeroing out the Washington County Regional Planning Council. That's included. I think that is included.
That is supposed to be zero.
Oh, okay, so we need to add that in there, so it should be 20,142.
No, 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 no.
Oh, it is.
19,000's right.
So you're only adding $1,000 over the requested.
Correct. And that 1,000's gonna go, SKPP.
Second. What discussion?
Thing to say. A couple of things, this is not major, major dollars. I would have preferred to make this revenue neutral, but I can go along with this. The other comment I need to make, I'm recusing because my wife is an employee of one of the outside agencies.
And I'm also recusing on Tri-County Community Action.
So if we can pull out Tri-County and Southern Island Chamber of Commerce for a separate vote?
I have a quick question, we don't have an attorney, but I sit on the Welcome House Properties Committee, but not on their board.
It's really your decision.
I am no longer on the board, but my wife's an employee.
I think there's also a couple of you who serve on the Partnership for Prevention, but I think it's probably not necessary to, because you don't earn any money.
No, nothing.
There is no financial meaning on an individual basis, you're exceptionally individual.
Yep. And you're on their board.
No, I received a service from Tri-County that would preclude me from voting.
So if we could peel those two out of this, if I can amend the motion to peel those two out for a separate vote?
Let's present that motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we have a second motion then for the other two, which two will have officially recused yourself?
What is it, it's Tri-County and the Chamber?
Do we have a motion for the approval of funding for those two organizations?
As presented. So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Seeing no oppositions and two recusals, the motion carries. That was a nice spring break.
This was easier than last year, I think.
Motion, is there any further discussion on the budget?
Rob, is there anything further from any one of you at the table at this point?
Would you like to know where you're at with the tax rate?
Yes, I would.
So you're at 1571 right now, which is about a $140 increase.
Motion to approve the preliminary budget as amended today.
Second?
Second.
Did you second? All those in favor of approval?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppositions or recusals?
Reasons stated earlier, no.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Unless there's any more comments.
Do you want to open it? Comments? Yeah, you can open it if you want.
Is there anybody from the public that would like to?
All right, then, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.